Yes.
I brought Lisa pictures. I was telling you all about that too.
Yeah.
In June, so that all the committee members could see. Yeah, that was not this month. Not, no, it was in June.
June.
Because they didn't meet in July.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Peterborough Select Board meeting for, I believe it's August already. August 1st. Yeah, shocked by that. Yeah, nice fall day. I'm Tyler Ward. With me is fellow Select Board member Bill Kennedy. Bill Taylor's not with us tonight. We have Nicole McStay, Town Administrator, and Ally Corrigan's Assistant to the Town Administrator. We are on air. If anybody would like to speak, of course, when called, I'll just state your name for the record. You know, we're all listening over here. Tonight's agenda, we'll consider the acceptance of a monument to be placed at the community center. We'll meet the SMP architects and Harvey Construction, the fire station design team, and then vote to accept some money, a grant.
Some money.
Some money.
And no minutes to argue over this evening. All right. I said we're on air, right?
Yes.
Great. All right, first up, who's presenting our welcome John?
We just need to open the public hearing.
Right. Make a motion that we open our public hearing pursuant to RSA 31 call number five dash E and then just consideration of acceptance of gift. I will sign it if I have to. All right, and all those in there? All right, we're open for business.
Okay. What's happening? So we're here.
Sure.
Forgive me if I appear a little tired. I was one of the foolish soccer fans who got up at three o'clock this morning and watched the Women's World Cup. And for those of you who don't know who I am, my name's John Coffold. I've been the owner of Peterborough with Granite and here in Peterborough for about thirty-five years and have been making monuments, memorials, and plaques and things around the region with my dad for about fifty years. And we're here to ask for permission for another monument. And I have pictures, I don't know if you, oh, there's an outline of the sketch proposed monument. Nothing's been cut, cast, carved in stone yet. We want to wait until we got the selectmen's approval before we cut any granite or cast any plaque. I'll tell you what the mock-up represents here in a little bit. But first of all, monuments are markers are and plaques are really important. They're a part of our history. They're all around here. And I brought about eight or ten pictures. You can't use that flashlight, though. I'll tell you about them though. Right outside the door here, within fifty feet of where we're standing, there's four or five monuments, plaques, markers to prominent citizens from the fountain right outside the door here, nineteen fourteen for the Chamberlain family. The Peterson plaque on the wall here, which we did years ago, honors citizens. There's a Dick Fertile marker just down the street. There's a Carol Ogilvie marker just outside the door here. So monuments and markers are really important to mark time, to record history, prominent places, prominent people from our... What we propose, oh, go back a little bit. There's a man named Donald Smith, Jimmy Smith, better known as. Two years ago, came to me and said, "We really want to do something special for the average citizen, for the regular guy." He grew up in Peterborough in the fifties and sixties and felt that it was very important to him where he worked, the businesses that he worked at, Dyer's Drug Store, Hub's Jewelry Store, Derby's Department Store. And the people at that time, Judge Brighton and Bert Dyer, really fostered his development. And my experience was in the seventies and eighties. I had the same feeling with people like Larry Bishop, people who are the average, normal citizen. They don't get recognition on a monument with their own prominent marker out there next to the War Memorial. But they were very important to all of our lives. And they helped make Peterborough the great place that it is and where we all grew up and why we love it here. So Jimmy said, "Is there something we can do to honor these people?" This was two years ago. He came with the idea and I said, "I don't know. We'll think about it. We'll work on it." And he said, "Okay, we could put up a monument somewhere to," as it says at the top here, "do all the hard," we went "all" the hard-working people and the citizens, past and present, who continue to make our town the great place it is to work. So we want to recognize all of us somehow, some way. Now, to, my son made this. This was the old sign, you might remember, "Welcome to Peterborough." So we kind of use this as a little historical part of the new proposed monument. And rather than identify, you might recognize, it's going to be a wood-looking effect on piece of granite here. It's about a foot thick and it's about five or six feet across and it's about five and a half feet tall. And maybe we have a picture later on that can show where we kind of propose to put that. So I made a plywood mock-up, so that shows the proportions even though we don't stand sideways now. That's okay. Gives you an idea of the scale, better than the little sketch does. But it's up at the Armory. The Rec Department is in charge of that particular property now. While I call it the Armory still. Now it's the community center. It'll take a while for, take years for that to change in our minds for some of us. But off to the side, about fifty, sixty feet away from the building, is a site we thought was kind of appropriate. We didn't want it to be in the way of the future development of the site for Fire Department, a road that might go around there. And if there was concern brought up about the building's going to be renovated and we're looking for a contractor, hopefully to redo the community center and modernize it, is this going to be in the way? Or is this going to be a problem for a contractor to work around? I don't really think so. They all carry insurance. If they do some damage or they hurt something, they got to pay for repair. But it's not that hard for me, even though it weighs a couple of tons. It's not that hard for me to go, say, put it aside for a week or two or a few months and then put it back. Or if it needed to be relocated sometime in the future, it's not that hard for us. For example, that fountain that's out there, that Grant Fountain dedicated to the Chamberlins in nineteen fourteen, started out on Summer Street and then I moved it to someone's backyard, Jim Grant's backyard, for about ten years. And then we moved it over to the center of the Historic Society walkway, where it stood for another ten or twenty years. And then someone came up with a bright idea that it'd be better out here in front of the town hall. So monuments and markers do get moved throughout history. It's not a big deal, really. Going back to the sketch, we, even though a lot of us had individuals in mind and places and businesses, like Derby's was really important to me as a kid, but nobody knows what Derby's is. And you can't really start naming individuals, businesses on a marker that's dedicated to all citizens. Where do you stop? You know, you'll pick a thousand names and then there'll be ten that'll say, "Hey, where's my name? Why aren't I on there?" Right? So inside of these letters here, we don't know how we're going to do it yet as monument makers or plaque makers, but inside of the letters, which would be quite large, we hope to identify organizations, like the Rotary Club could have an emblem depicted in here, or the Lions Club, or a drugstore would have the Mortis of Tessele, things like that. We would kind of indicate all the important businesses that are around. A law firm would be represented by the, what, Scale of Justice thing? And other stuff like that. Fire Department would have a logo, all the organizations and some people, or businesses, rather, we could find their logo from the past and maybe try to represent it in here in a small way. So individuals and certain businesses that are around here, organizations that were, you speak of up here, their organizations, can be kind of represented on there without making it... One of our designs was, okay, we put the Rotary emblem here, we put Scale of Justice in, we put classroom all over, but that would be not a very good-looking stone, so, or marker. So that's where we stand at this point. We need to get the selectmen's permission to do this because it's town property and the Recreation Department Committee and Lisa has already said it's okay with them. So we hope that you would give us the blessing. We have fundraisers and donors towards this project so that it wouldn't cost the town anything. It will be donated and I'll handle the installation and any movement that might have to be done two or three years down the road if the building's being renovated and you feel that it's in the way or something, we can come and move it without any trouble. I have a feeling that, well, you know how long it takes to put things out to bid and just getting the funds for renovation. It's probably going to be a while before the building even gets worked on and updated. And we'd like to move ahead with this, hopefully by the end of the year. Personally, it's already August 1st today and I need a couple of months just to cut the stone and to get the plaque ready. So it'll be close whether or not I could do this this year. May have to wait till the spring. But before we can go any further, it's up to you folks to say yes or no to allow us to proceed. I think I've said enough and explained things enough. There was, was there one more picture that you have of, with the building in the background? Sort of, yeah, here. So if you can imagine looking at the Armory, that end of it, as you face it from Elm Street, it's off to the right. And we tried to move it towards the shrubs a little bit. There's a waterway behind that particular location, like a wetland sort of. And I don't imagine that in today's world you'd be able to fill it in and build a road back there. There's another fifty feet away, there's already an existing road. So that would be most likely an access. So this isn't going to interfere with any site development, I don't feel. I don't think the contractors are going to have to excavate out there, but we'll see. So that gives you an idea. It's about, I don't know, sixty or eighty feet away from the building. And we would probably do a couple of little plantings around there. That's about it. This is a low-maintenance thing. Nobody's going to have to mortar, repair it. For example, we have a beautiful War Memorial out here dedicated to all our veterans, made out of brick. Anything brick that's two-sided, exposed to the weather, is going to decay pretty fast over time. I know we did that about forty years ago, had to be done over. Now it's quite eroded in places and it needs to be worked on again to preserve it. That's another subject for you guys to deal with. Any questions or anything that I could help you with or help make the decision? Did I leave anything out, Allison?
No.
Okay. I think the important part is too, for the town, it's not going to cost the town anything. We have private donors lined up that are willing to pay for this and ready to go. But like I said, nothing's been cast bronze or cut in stone yet, so.
Yeah, thank you, John. I really appreciate what you said about the importance of historic markers and really kind of capturing history and honoring events and people of importance in our, in the history of the town and so forth. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be as kind and blunt as I can about this. Someone mentioned tombstone and that's all I see when I look at this. And I'm sorry, I can't get past that.
That's all right. There's nothing wrong with tombstones either.
Yeah. And then where I'm, I have some concern is that it's sitting out from food pantry and it looks like a really expensive thing. And I realize you have donors that are willing to donate, you know, raise the money and donate this. But we also have a fire station project that could use the donated money right in that spot. You know, I've, I've since, since the packet come came out, I've since heard from probably a dozen people that are really concerned with this going, going where you want it to go. We, when we were, the board was originally remailed by Mr. Jimmy Smith a month ago or so.
Our two, yeah. It's been a long while.
Yeah, and individually, I think we shared our concerns or, we didn't, we couldn't think of a place where this would go in Peterborough. And I realize it's a monument to the us regular folk, but who are we addressed? Who is this here towards? Who's going to see this? Are we patting ourselves on the back by seeing this?
It's, I think it's at the community center where a lot of the community will be going to vote and recognizing people that would read it. They are recognizing, we are recognizing ourselves in a way. And I have to take it back with the tombstone phrase because tombs are where there's a grave. There's no grave here. We're not marking a grave. And also, All Saints Church is a tomb. You could call that a tombstone, yet we consider that a beautiful church, a beautiful building. But it's also a tomb. So tombstones are, maybe it's because I'm in the trade, that I don't think of it as a negative connotation or image.
Well, in the right places, maybe. It's just that, that's what was, someone said to me and I was, oh, boy, you know, and I don't unsee that now. I also have concern with where the handshake seals the deal. That's pretty close to the corruption. I just put a dollar sign in there. And you know, as a town, we work really hard to be transparent and make sure that, you know, certain organizations aren't getting better treatment or other, and that sort of thing. I'm on the fence.
Okay. Bill, what would you like to add?
Well, I have some questions. First of all, I know that the Rec Department has considered this and then the Rec Committee has considered this and actually had a vote on it, is that correct?
Yeah, I was raising my hand because I wanted to address that because I think it piggybacks on what Tyler was just saying. When we, like, we voted to accept the idea of a monument at the community center because I think that that is a nice idea. It is a place that's well-trafficked and a lot of people could see it. But we specifically said that we were uncomfortable with some of the words and the handshake seals the deal and that this was not a final design that the Rec Committee was approving.
I don't know when you're opening it to the public.
Sure, Sarah, did you have anything else?
Well, what was the vote? Was it unanimous on the Rec Committee?
To accept.
To accept the monument, but not necessarily.
That a monument could be put on the community center.
Okay.
Yeah, as I said, this is a general mock-up. It's still open to modification or elimination of something like that.
Let me put in my two cents just real quick. My first reaction when I heard from Jimmy about this, I felt that this was overextended sentimentality. The fellow has not lived here for, what, fifty years? He grew up here in the fifties and sixties and really hasn't resided here at all. And so I felt it was kind of a nostalgic thing. But what turned me back towards accepting this was I had a conversation with John and he explained to me what the thoughts behind it are and his support for it. And you know, John is a very valuable member of this community and I tend to want to support him, not necessarily Jimmy. But I also have a comment from Mandy Slyver, if I might read it. She's upstairs attending the celebration of life for Megan Peers. But she quoting her, "The whole thing feels like a step back for a progressive town like Peterborough. I understand the sentiment, but the messaging wording and imagery all feels very old-fashioned and a bit it used to me. The idea of a handshake sealing a deal is completely contradictory to the message of transparency that we've," and you've said. And I, and I, I agree. I agree, that's not, I wouldn't accept that design. Now, my dilemma at this point is we don't have a finalized design. We don't know what it's going to look for. Are we agreeing to have this done and placed at the community center? Or do we want to get feedback from?
I think what we need is your permission to proceed and say it's okay to do this and we can work on with you and the committee, and the Rec Committee.
Subject to final.
Subject to final design and wording and so on.
Is that, is that possible?
I think you can do that. I think that you should make sure that the, you know, your, your motion is worded that way. That you would want to, you know, have gifters, you know, come back to the board, present a final design, you know, with the input from, from all the interested parties.
Yeah, this is, if I might add, this is really the first time that anyone other than a small group has really seen what, what the idea was. And so it's just as a few people have had input. And now we could open it up to someone else would have a better wording for this or a better imagery.
Sarah, you want to add something?
Um, there's just two things. I think that, I think it's, I think it's great if you want to do it, but I think it's a little bit... First of all, I don't see that, the first thing is I don't understand the rush. Like, I think this could be definitely, like, I know it's August 1st. You have a lot, I know how busy you are.
Yeah, thank you.
I've worked on my in-laws.
Yeah.
I'm very aware of that. And I do think that you're a very valuable member, but I just don't see the rush is the first thing. And the other thing is, I appreciate so much of what you said about the sentiment behind the idea, but I think it's a little busy and undirected. And I think that it's a little like exclusive and I think it would be better if it like called people in. Because to me, as somebody who's only been here since 2008, which I know is sort of a 2008, whatever, I'm not, I think that you could kind of hone in on that historical thing you were talking about. And I also think, I know everybody always laughs at like town committee work and how we have to go through a process, but I think it would be great if you sort of called in and created a little, I don't know, task, task force or subcommittee with, maybe with Rec or Parks and kind of have it come from the community with, with guidance from you and Allison and other people who are interested in it. Because then it could come more from the current community and not just the people who have been here, whose families have been like grinding it out for a long time, which is really great. But that, to me, I just feel like, I don't know, what's the rush? This is a great idea. Let's give it time to like marinate and simmer and like really come from the community and like maybe a year from now, you're putting the finishing touches on it or something. And I also think, I'd like to talk more about locations because I feel like, I agree with you, it's hard to think where, but I think like if we all got together and talked about it, we could figure it out. Because I, I do think this airs into a little pat on the back the way it is now, but I know you're not committed to the, like, you're committed to the sentiment, but not necessarily the, so that's my two cents. I just think like, let's slow down and really make it a community thing so it ends up coming out from the community.
Appreciate the comments. Appreciate that comment. And for me, slowing it down is not a bad thing. It would really help me out and it would allow time for input from a larger group because really, like I said, it's really the first time that we're presenting anything to the, to the public, so.
Well, and I know how inclusive you are. Like, we've had conversations. I know that you're like about everyone.
Trying to be.
And I think that, I think you could bring that across a little better than it does now.
Thank you.
Yeah, so similarly, when, when you were talking and figuring this out, I was thinking, like, okay, so now seems to be a good time when you'd be opening it up in some way to the public input into, I was even thinking, oh, I make sure in the, when the letters are done that there's a book at a restaurant, you know? And so people are going to want to sort of brainstorm and do that. And then to the location thing, we certainly talked about that in the Rec Committee meeting, like, where should it go? Where is it, who's, you know, all those questions about audience and so forth. And I'm reported as saying, "Oh, we're in front of Bass Hall." And it's like, no, I didn't quite mean that. But it's sort of, again, like what you're saying, John, there are monuments various places. And I thought, you know, there's a chance for it to be somewhere in, in this sort of monument grouping down here. And then there was other thoughts about the Rotary. But then I came around to thinking, no, I like it being at the PCC. I like the community center, the language of that. I'm not worried at all about the food pantry like it seems too fancy, but you know, of course, again, as we seek public involvement, what does Gloria think? You know, like, and I bet you the food pantry's kind of represented as those organizations and citizens that make this a great place. I mean, I think it's not, I think it's more populous than elitist myself, the sentiment of this.
Well, I don't think it's elitist.
Yeah. And it's also, but I mean, again, in turn, design speaks volumes. And so how you design it and even font choices and all those things, if people are sort of saying, "Ooh, what if we do this?" And it'll be a laborious process, John. You know, but.
It's all right. We're used to that.
That. So again, in terms of location, there has been some thought about that, but of course there could be more.
Yep.
Carol, who was first, Carol?
Actually, I think Allison was next.
Good old Allison, patient.
Well, I look at it as the fabric of the community. We're talking about laborers all the way through to professional people. And people who are looking at it, I know, when I look at things like that, if it's about the community and different occupations within the community, it brings back memories. You know, I was born and raised here. It brings back a ton of memories. But a lot of people will say, "Oh, well, I do such and such and this represents me because I'm part of this current community. My name isn't on there, but my occupation is on there." And I think that brings everything together. So again, to me, it's the fabric of the community.
Thank you, Carol Nelson. So I do have several thoughts. First question, can it be two-sided?
Can be.
And I do think that in your original presentation, John, you talked about not naming people because you're going to leave someone out. And I feel like even what you're putting in the sign, if it stays, you're going to leave somebody out. It's just, that's just the way it is.
Just the way it is.
I mean, I look at that sign and I personally am not represented because I'm just not. I was in publishing, but I didn't write a book. I was in the Lions, luckily, but I just feel like people are going to look at it and not really.
It's a good point. It's so hard to include and not forget.
Exactly.
Include everybody.
Right.
I've done War Memorial plaques for, since nineteen seventy-eight and committees come to me with lists of names. And I say, "Do you have everybody? Are you sure?" "Yes, we're sure." But ten years later, someone comes out of the woodwork and says, "My name should be on there. That's why you see out there those plaques, those little names that have been added all these years." It's really hard. We can do our best.
So just a thought of possibly doing it two-sided. I am concerned about missing out on somebody by doing the little logos. And then to your concern, Tyler, about the cost, it seeming expensive, maybe you could do a little plaque that says generously donated by? To say that it, you know, somebody, even if it's just, whatever you do, John Smith or Jimmy Smith.
Yeah, yeah.
So people won't think that.
I feel my point was, is it, is this where money should be going? Sorry, and I don't mean mean about that.
Right. Not at all.
We know we're hard work. We know. Why do we need that pad of that? Tony, you had something?
Yeah, just, John said that it's not a big deal to move this, but I just wanted to point out that where you're showing it being located, if this is going forward, I'd just suggest keeping in mind that we're about to embark on designing a new fire station, fire and ambulance station, which will probably necessitate changing some parking and some driveway. It's possible that some of that could be used for parking.
It's a good point, and I know with the Rec people and Lisa, we did talk about the whole campus is going to be kind of remodeled up there.
We should have a design, or at least a proposed design in the next few months. Why not wait until?
Good point.
And for fundraising, John, I mean, you can always get pledges from people. You don't necessarily have to accept cash.
Correct.
So that's something that, you know, you could pursue.
At this point, that's, that's what we've been doing, sort of. And we just have commitments for pledges, basically. No one's put any money down yet.
I saw the notice in the paper and I, you know, who doesn't like some monuments in their town? But one of my first thoughts was sometimes before you build a new monument, you need to look at, you know, how are you doing maintaining the ones you already have? And then just coming here and seeing this, I guess I would feel it's very important for you as our leaders to maintain the final say on the design, on the placement, so that, you know, there have been cases where people are very generously donating, but, but without proper, how do I want to say, oversight? Or in your case, mentioning, opening it up to a broader community to have some input. I just think it's very important that you retain that, if you vote yes, that you maintain authority over the final decisions. And that could be copy because I agree with you, I don't think the handshake seals the deal. You know, to me, that's, that's old. I mean, nothing wrong, it's great. I would wish that were the case in our world today, but it just, it looks like.
We left it on there, but I can tell you that a few people in a small group when we were working on the design said, "That's kind of corny."
Yeah. Okay. And I also agree with what you said about when you try and start including businesses, for sure you're leaving, somebody will be left out, so. But, and, and the editing of the copy and so forth, but.
Well, this is, thank you. This has been good, more design ideas come to mind when you say using the backside. Maybe the back could be where logos and images and whatever are put, carved actually into the stone. And then there's space to add others that might be forgotten later on. This is something that I do quite often as we go back and we add names. we add names and lettering and so on, onto existing plaques and stones.
Forgive you, but I forgot your name, could you just, could you state your name for the record, I forgot.
Your name for the minutes.
Kristen Carlson.
Thank you.
Now, Sarah.
Just one other thing, as I hear everybody talk, it might also be worth talking about with the people who have come to you, saying that they want, maybe this isn't the right idea at all, and what you wanna do is undertake marking some of the historic things, like derbies and such things, with smaller things around the town, and maybe that's the way you are able to, like sort of hatch a larger project of mapping, like historical Peterborough or something, and maybe this isn't the thing, but I don't know, that just came to me, listening to you guys all talk, I just, I do think that this, if you give this time to sit a little bit, it'll come to you more clearly.
That's a good point, but derbies is marked, I don't know where in the past.
No, no, but more, more, I'm saying like, more comprehensively all over town, with like, like a fresh perspective.
Yes.
That kind of thing.
Yes.
No, I know, I.
I know, I was on the Heritage Commission, I, I love the demarcation of important sites and people that have affected how the town developed and so forth, but on the Heritage Commission, we heard from a lot of people that just didn't want any more signs, they said, we need an arm, you know, there's enough, enough billboards, we could put it in the roundabout, a 101, anyone else have, have any?
That's actually not the worst.
Could I, could I make a suggestion that perhaps we table this for the time being, so that you have an opportunity to get some feedback, and also to develop the.
And rework it.
Rework the design based on some comments that we've had tonight, rather than us giving our blessing to the project tonight, to come back.
I prefer to do that, yeah, I'd rather not vote on something we haven't really seen or really found, found the right spot for, because we did struggle with that when we were first given this, where could that go, we thought about maybe Rotary Park, that would be appropriate, there are other businesses that, that fit in there, and the gentleman apparently didn't like that idea, wasn't, you know, and personally, I feel a little put off that we gave some input and he kind of went around us, went to the REC committee for.
Well, I think Rotary Park is now a town park, so we have a rule, we have a rule that we can't put monument type things in town parks.
Just the ones that the Parks Committee oversees, and there's a specific list of the ones that they oversee.
They oversee Rotary.
Not Rotary Park, no.
Yeah.
So, it could go there.
Isn't it called Wilder Park?
Yeah, Wilder Rotary Park, and that also has a commemoration for Wilder Thermometer Factory, which is the site that it was built on.
So, who has jurisdiction over that?
The town, just the board.
And same, same with the parking lot area there.
And finally, for me, one more reservation is, where, where does it end, what if I want to put up a sign, I think a really good idea, and get some people, before you know it, we have word of the monuments after, you know, and, and I understand, John, please, don't, don't, I appreciate what Bill said, you know, we all really so appreciate the work you do for the town, and everything's so beautiful, but, where's it at, anyone else have anything to add, and I think Bill had a great suggestion, maybe we, let's, let's close with, let's table it, no vote, just wait till the end of it, okay?
Okay.
Question, and do you have any, like, you know, as somebody suggested, subcommittee or any kind of.
Guidance.
Guidance towards public input, I'm sorry?
I think the REC committee ought to be the first step to approving the design, and bring it to us at that moment.
But we don't have a mechanism for having like an, an input team.
And why not the Parks Committee, I'm just curious.
The Parks Committee is really focused just on maintenance right now, this is a very, very busy time of year for them.
I feel like, I feel like the REC committee, we can't, we shouldn't do anything with this until we have the fire station plans at the, at minimum, so I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I'm unclear why the REC department's overseeing this.
Well, I don't, I don't know either, that's where Mr. Jimmy went, it's their property, essentially, they have.
But what if it doesn't end up there, then they're out of it.
That's, that's my question.
Could be.
I don't think it's us.
Heritage Commission, go to the Heritage Commission.
Exactly.
That's a perfect place.
Play any wood, I think we should go.
I am on the planning board, but I, I also am on the master plan steering committee, and we did just, we're putting the finishing touches on, on like historical and cultural chapters, and maybe take a look at them, and they're much more shorter, they're shorter and more readable than the previous master plan, they're like actually fun to look at, maybe it would give you some inspiration, because it sort of goes through the, like how things have gone, I know you're on that committee too, you know what I mean, just to sort of see if it, like how to find a place, if there's a right place for it.
It's a good, I mean, it speaks right to the Heritage Commission, actually.
Yeah.
That's what we should send.
That's where it lives, that's where it should live.
No matter where it ends up, excuse me for interrupting, I just don't see the connection with the, even if it's on the REC department land, of course, they would work with the Heritage Commission, but this is just not under the purview.
Yeah.
Of the REC committee.
Right.
How do you, how do you justify it being under the purview of the REC?
Someone, someone sent him our way.
Yeah.
Is how it happened.
Yeah.
To present it to the REC committee.
But you're in charge.
Because they oversee Rec.
Because we oversee.
Right. See the Recreation Department's property.
Right. Utilities and programming.
I think it just started, Carol, by looking for a site.
Yeah.
Thought that might be an appropriate site, so the first place you gotta go is to the REC committee, if you wanna use that as a site.
Yeah, that makes sense, that that's why.
All right, thank you.
I don't know, I have to go down the table, I'm just, we'll be gonna do.
No.
Okay. Thanks for the input, everybody.
All right, I mean, can motion a closed public hearing?
Well, hold on, I wait, Tyler, I'm unclear, is this going to the Heritage Commission? Where is this going, I'm unclear.
I think.
You don't know either.
I feel like they gave suggestions, and it's up to John to figure it out, that was kind of my vibe, that it was up to John to kind of take what happened here, bring it to his group, and then figure out what was next.
And then the Heritage Commission makes sense to start, and we could work with all the different groups to get some kind of design, new design, thank you.
Thanks, thank you, John. Second, second, I was like, okay, public hearing closed, thank you all, you're good someone. All right, up next, fire station design team, welcome.
John, you should stay.
I'm walking.
Right on cue.
Send the architects and Harvey Construction, will, will Seth be introducing everybody?
Happy to, sure.
Welcome, Seth.
You know I like to stand. Good evening, if we're up, so I'm Seth McLean, I know all of you, I think, for the most part, but for the public who might be watching, I'm involved with the fire station project and public works director here in town, I'm pleased to, this'll be very brief on my part, but I'm pleased tonight just to do an introduction, our building committee, now formally building committee, I've spent quite a bit of time, through a long process of, a public bidding process to solicit for professional service providers for our fire station project, and tonight we have with us our two chosen providers, our architect, SMP Architects out of Concord, and Harvey Construction is represented tonight by our project manager Keith Kelly, so I guess with that, I'll, I'll take a seat, and I'll introduce first SMP, this is Jason Lacombe and Anthony Mento with SMP Architects.
Welcome.
Good evening. So, yeah, Jason Lacombe, I'm the principal, president of SMP Architecture, my colleague Anthony is here, the rest of the team, we left at home, I put a PowerPoint together, it was a couple hours, so Seth thought maybe we should just skip that, right, so we are celebrating 40 years as a firm this year, we do primarily public projects of all types, we're known for a lot of libraries, a lot of historic buildings, fire stations, public safety, so we get to stand in front of a lot of audiences in the evenings and talk about architecture, and why we like to do what we like to do, that's all I have, really. Anything you'd like to add?
We, we stay up on the latest improvements in fire stations and safety facilities, we, we've, over the years, we've done six or seven different stations around the communities, and we like working in small towns that utilize the services that those stations provide, and we're really pleased to be here and work with Peterborough, so thank you very much.
Any questions for us?
Well, I will, I'm tied with, so, so, we were, you were recommended by the building committee that got together, and of course, Bill Taylor, the other selectman who's been sitting in on that whole process, and of course, Seth and Cleen did a couple great things to say about the guys, so I feel real confident and kind of excited that you're involved in the project, and know that we're gonna get the station that our fire department needs and our community needs, so thank you.
Excellent, well, we're happy to be here, so thank you very much.
Great, thanks. It's my turn.
My name is Keith Kelly, I represent Harvey Construction, I'm director of pre-construction and planning, so my involvement is all of what's going on right now, we were retained by the town to have Harvey represent you as a construction manager, most of you might know that we were involved with the library, so we have some history here in the community, we're very happy to be back, we are 84 years strong, all sorts of levels of construction and management throughout the state, we love New Hampshire, we do most of our work in New Hampshire, so I'm here to work with SMP to get us to a project that we all can support, and that it's gonna satisfy the needs of the town, and certainly looking forward to being back here again with the community and building a great facility. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the work on the library, the gift.
Yeah, great.
Better for that, and looking forward to staying on this.
Yep, if not better.
Great, thanks. Anybody have any questions, or?
Okay, quick thing, so our building committee is now actually the formal building committee, and we formally meet this Thursday for our first publicly noticed meeting, and we'll be going through a lot of different sort of administrative things, and sort of setting, setting ourselves up for success going through the next coming months, following meeting with building committee, we'll be working very closely to develop a schedule for the community for key dates that the architects working with Harvey Construction will be looking to meet in terms of public hearing, public forums, soliciting public input, all the way up through design development, leading us into our budget season this year, where hopefully we've got a number and a product that we can speak about and have some serious community conversations about, so very soon, tonight was just an opportunity to introduce the folks that we've hired, but in the next couple weeks, you're gonna get a lot more information for those that are tuning in and are interested to be involved with the project, you're gonna have a lot of opportunities to be involved with the development of this project as well, we really think this needs to be a community centered project with a lot of input, it's obviously a technical building, there's a lot of things that maybe we can't move a lot of, but we want the community's input, and you're gonna be getting some key dates, and we hope that you'll, that you'll plan on attending and giving, giving some feedback as we go through the process, thank you.
Thanks, Seth. All right, a little new business, we.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thanks.
I have a question, the meeting is next Thursday, the building committee meeting is Thursday, this coming Thursday, at what time?
11, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's 11 a.m.
Here?
Yeah, well, here? Yes, okay, they're recording.
It should be on the calendar. Community Center Investment Program Grant, who will be representing this? Oh, Lisa, welcome, Lisa, Director of.
I'm Lisa Cosell, that's the Recreation Director, and we found out about this, I don't know, in February, and then Kate Coon was very instrumental in this too, so she and I brought everything together and got all the volunteers to write them letters, and we did the grant, and then we had people proof it, and we sent it all off within 30 days' time, which resulted in an up to million dollar grant for the renovation for the community center, so we would like to ask the board if they would accept that.
I don't know. What does that mean, is it a matching grant?
It, to a degree, yes, because of the 15%.
Matching funds.
There's matching funds, 15% had to be matched, and in October of 2018, $100,000 was approved by the REC committee for windows and floor and lighting, and then we have the money in the revolving fund, so we have $150,000 that we can do our 15% with.
Oh, that's a, that's a pretty good, it's a matching term, right? All right, we have a couple new members of our grant writing committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, you can catch, good, good gap. Do anybody wanna add to that?
I'd say accept it, please, now.
Can I add one?
Sure.
So, I, this actually ties in with what John said, is because your grant has to be completed by a certain date.
Correct.
Yeah, so remember you were saying, oh, there's plenty of time, so just, but I don't think the work that you're having done is gonna be.
No, I can speak to that, so the terms of the grant are that we have to be, we had to be shovel ready, in which we are, and we have to complete expenditure of the money by August of 2025, so it has to, anything that we're gonna do, that takes money, is gonna have to do that, but we are not doing anything to the outside building envelope, it's roofs and windows, and so we're not, I mean, as far as we know, I mean, to the point about driveways might be.
Or you're gonna need to get cranes around and all of that.
Yeah, right, right.
Great, that's a good point.
There's another piece of this too, that we have to keep in mind, I mean, even with the grant application, we already used taxpayer funds to support this program, particularly through Ally and Seth's work, you know, Seth and Tim Hurley, he had been part of the assessment project that was done a few years ago now, that actually set the basis that the grant application was submitted on with that engineering study, so we'll also need the select board, if we're gonna be able to do this, you're gonna definitely still need Seth's help, you're definitely still gonna probably need, you know, Tim Rosen's help and other folks that we have here on staff to carry it forward, because the expertise just isn't in the REC department, nor would you expect it to be, so to that end, we need to ask the select board to allow us to use taxpayer resources to support the community center project.
Could you use some of the grant, going towards the facilities?
I think the grant money is gonna be pretty tight for the project itself, and I think that there, I haven't read through all the details yet, because we haven't gotten all the documentation yet, but I believe that most of it needs to go directly to your project, so this could be part of our match, for sure, but we're gonna need to use their, their resources, they don't get paid out of the REC revolving fund, you know, their, Seth's salary isn't covered at all by the community center's income, so, so I would also ask the select board, and they also, you're gonna need Lily Gilligan, you're gonna need, you know, Antonia Rose, who run AEP and AR, you know, you're gonna need their support on this.
So, you're talking about administrative overhead?
A lot of administrative overhead.
Do we have an estimate, or what that might be?
No, not yet, but it is gonna be involved, and I think that it's a million dollar grant, it would be really unfortunate to have any pieces of the administration of the grant, the audit, the, you know, the follow-up, because this is, these are federal dollars, there's gonna be a single audit involved, so we're gonna have to pay auditors out of, out of this, or, and use Lily's time to, you know, communicate with the auditors while they do their work, there's a lot more to it than, than just simply, you know, getting the contractors, putting a roof on, putting some windows in, so, I think that just at least, in terms of this project, this rehabilitation project, the selectmen can, can waive the restrictions and allow us to use taxpayer funds, it's really gonna allow us to go a lot more smoothly.
I thought we had approved funds for renovation of the community center.
We used a, a trust fund.
Right.
Yep.
And that's no longer applicable, or is?
We used the trust, we used it.
We used it up?
Yes.
All right.
$50,000 out of the trust fund.
Would we be setting precedent by doing this?
No, we already use taxpayer dollars at the community center, that's how we pay for the, all of the food pantry, and the utilities and whatnot that goes to the food pantry, that's all paid out of the general fund.
Well, frankly, it is worth these, I mean, if we want to have the rec center down, or the community center down, if we don't do this, it's gonna leak anywhere, so I'm inclined to give that authority. So, are you gonna add something?
No.
Anybody have anything to add?
I'll just ask, when we accepted this gift, right, it just said we will not use any taxpayer money to support it, is that what it was?
So, the select board voted in 2008 to accept the building, but also stipulated that no tax dollars would be used to support the building, or its renovation, that it would be solely funded by either, you know, through the program income or by donations. or by donations. So any renovation work or anything like that. So the only thing that we've done up there with tax, tax dollars is support the food pantry because that's, that's more of a human services driven thing. But everything else that's been done up there has been done either through donations or, or through program fees.
So this is really kind of the first time that administrative...
Anything that's been spent as far as tax dollars or anything that we've ever considered.
So maybe this is the first and last time.
That's a great point. And I, I think, understanding where they, maybe where they stood, maybe some of them didn't want that building, didn't want another liability for the town, and so that was a stipulation. But I think having now seen that the community center and the townspeople have found a million dollar grant and are really working towards that renovation, I think maybe it would be not to miss out on a certain... Yeah, Lisa?
May I add that the Rec Committee has also gone further to start a 501(c)(3) called Friends of Peterborough Recreation Projects. And we've got our articles of agreement, we've got our tax ID number. We're just waiting for the 501(c)(3) status. We've got a board, we've been meeting. And once we get all that, then we can start going after the other, you know.
Here I thought Pickleball was going to support this whole thing.
Well, it's a part of it.
So, yeah, Pickleball will do a bit, but I, I, I mean, Nicole and Lisa, we'd have to look at the small print, but I feel like I remember when we were working through the grant language that soft costs were allowable.
Absolutely, they're part of the match.
And that stuff would be soft costs, wouldn't it?
Exactly, and that's part of the match. So we'll be able to, you know, track those things.
Okay.
And put some estimates to them and use them as, as part of that 15% match that you need.
Okay.
But the money to make that match has to come from somewhere. And that's, that's what I'm talking about. So we have to be able to pay Seth's salary in the first place. And Seth is paid out of the general fund, you know.
So then it's like, as a soft cost, we'd pay back into the general fund from the grant?
So as a soft cost, you'd be able to say the town of Pete, because the federal government doesn't care about the selectmen's vote. As far as they're concerned, this building belongs to the town of Peterborough.
Right.
So they're seeing it as being the town of Peterborough's building. Therefore, the town of Peterborough can use 15% match.
Match itself.
And that can include soft costs. And soft costs can be staff time and other things, you know, other materials, other equipment. If we were to use town trucks, for instance, you know, to help facilitate some of this, that would be a soft cost. That's what they, that's how they're seeing it. Now, that's not how the select board, at least not the board in the past, has seen it. You know, they, they consider these, you know, yes, it's a town of Peterborough building, but they don't want it, they don't want it to be funded the same way as the other town of Peterborough buildings. They want it to be self-funded.
And I don't know that we're setting that precedent. In other words, we're not saying, yes, we want to accept for the town taxpayer money to maintain that building. I think we're saying that we don't want to miss this opportunity for self-use soft costs.
I think that's exactly the way, yes.
And there's no other way that this would happen without that.
Right, exactly.
I guess just the question that Kate asked, I just was curious, the answer to, these soft costs can be tracked and enumerated, right? So there will be a number. Is that something that can be paid for by the 15% that Rec already has set aside for this? Or does that just overcomplicate it?
Could it be done? Yeah, absolutely. Is it, is it overcomplicating? Yeah, to be, to be perfectly frank. It's all, that's a lot of just weird accounting for us to have to do. Go ahead, Seth.
I think we're going to need every dollar in the project budget for the project itself. You don't want to be reimbursing my salary because I think we're going to have a hard time meeting all of our objectives based on construction escalation right now. So honestly, I think that it's, please allow for administrative staff who's generally funded to support the project during the project with no expectation that the general fund gets reimbursed from the project.
And let's keep in mind that...
I think that's probably more practical, I'm sorry to cut you off, just because I think we're going to need everything.
Yeah, and exactly. And I think you're absolutely right because let's keep in mind that the engineer, the engineering study that was done on that building came up with $2.1 million worth of work that needs to be done. This, this gets us halfway there, so.
Sarah Steinberg-Hiller, I don't think you guys have to worry about setting a precedent. This is just, if we want the community, the town sort of invested itself in the community center in an actionable way, right? We vote there, the farmer's market is there, there's so much going on there. But it seems to me like we have to take steps like this to get to where, and like you guys have this committee that's going to be a 501(c)(3), like everything's moving in the right direction to have it be paying for itself. So to me, it just seems like there's no precedent. There's no like citizen being able to come back and say, "You set a terrible precedent." It's not like that at all.
Yeah, these are all great ones. I'm glad we went through that instead of just staying in the beginning and just take them up again. Good, good ideas.
So what's the formulation of our motion then? Who wants to craft that?
So the board should make a motion to accept the CDFA Community Center Investment Program Grant for the renovation of the community center and further to allow administrative support and oversight of the project.
By town.
By town staff.
So also nicely said, not all is new. Now, I would like to say, I know many people have left, but now that we've come along with our business and we've accepted grant money, we're working on the project, you know, we're talking about honoring people. The world lost Rodney Bartlett last week. And Rodney gave us many years, gave this town many years of his life and many years and his expertise, and he managed to complete some projects over the years, infrastructure projects that were crippled in this town and get them rolling, get them going. And if you would really just sit with me for a moment, sounds, move Rodney's, Rodney on your mind. I'd really appreciate it. How long should I be? I think you appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for your...
Thank you, Tony.
All right, anything else?
I think the most important part of the meeting is the motion to...
I just hope people would maybe take a minute and go upstairs to Megan's.
Yes, right.
Celebration of life, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for your time, guys. All right, thanks, everyone.
Megan Pierce.
Yes, you have.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming, guys. Thank you.